Morning, everybody. I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cellphones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised that our city council meetings are broadcast on television on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed? We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Keith Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Father, I thank you for this day, Lord. We just thank you for all the blessings, Father, you truly give us. We thank you for forgiveness more than anything, Father. We pray that we use that and all the gifts and talents you give us, Lord, just to seek you, to serve you, to please you with all that we say, do, and do. May we walk with you, Father, and bless you with all that we do. We give you thanks in advance. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Praise to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on February 20th.
Amen.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of February 16th through 22nd.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor?
I'd like to ask Patricia Sherman to come up, please. And you want to come up quick? Are you with her? Okay. Whereas on the 150th anniversary of the establishment of the Benevolent Protective Order of Elks, we celebrate the Order and Alabama's Elks Association commitment to selflessly serving others in need across our great state and nation. Founded in New York City on February 16th, 1867 by Charles Agronan, Sidney Vivian, and a handful of others, this order has spread across the country with 1 million Elks members and 2,000 lodges, and 7,500 Elks members and 23 lodges in Alabama. Elks are dedicated to charity, justice, and patriotism. The Elks invest millions of hours each year to build stronger communities, assist homeless veterans, and to assure that kids steer away from drugs. To that end, Elks have dispersed over the course of the Order's history nearly $4 billion in cash, goods, and services to the nation's veterans, the disadvantaged and handicapped, and patriotic and civic programs. Elks are committed to building up the next generation of Elks, rank among the top three private providers of scholarships for students. Each year, millions of dollars are donated by Elk members and awarded to thousands of students as they pursue their dreams to become the nation's future leaders. The Gadsden Elks Lodge has a state scholarship winner. Since the earliest days of the Order, patriotism has been among the many hallmarks that make the Benevolent and Protective Order of the Elks stand out from other fraternal organizations. The Elks have always reverenced the American flag and the sacrifices made daily in honor of it. In 1907, Elks members adopted June 14th as Flag Day, and in 1911, the Order made it mandatory that all Elks lodges must observe Flag Day with appropriate ceremonies. On August 3rd, 1949, President Harry Truman himself, a member of the Order, permanently designated June 14th as Flag Day. Therefore, I Sherman out the mayor of the city of Gadsden by the virtue of the authority vested in me to hereby proclaim February 2018, the 150th anniversary of the establishment of the Benevolent and Protective Order of the Elks.
You know, we had a proclamation given to us by the governor of Alabama, and it was three pages long, and we tried to shorten it down, so I just wanted to add a couple of things that we do locally that we were not able to put in this. So here at our lodge, which is right over here on First Street, we do support a camp called Camp Aska, which is a special needs camp in Jackson, Alabama. In fact, that is our state major project. Each year, we give out dictionaries to third graders. We always honor veterans, and we have an annual Veterans' Day as close as we can to November the 11th with a meal and entertainment for veterans. We do a hoop shoot, which this year, it's for kids aged 8 to 13, and this year, we were assisted by the city of Gadsden's recreation program, and we had a very successful one this year. We give away scholarships every year. As he read in the proclamation, we had a local winner through our lodge. We always try to be or have kids and everybody aware of illegal drugs that are, in my way of thinking, very harmful to our area and our nation. We have visits to nursing homes because we just want to honor people that can no longer be out and about. Last year, we had a special project that we helped a local art teacher who had a very limited budget for over 1,000 students to have more money for her art projects. And we just want to thank you and thank you again, Mayor.
I want to tell you a little history when you are dumb like I was. I was in about the sixth grade, and I think they started a Pony League baseball team over there, and their jerseys and uniforms said BPOE. And I asked one of the older guys, I said, "What's that stand for?" He said, "Best people on earth."
That's right.
You ever heard of it?
Yes, yes, I have. And I would also, thank you.
Yeah.
I would also like to introduce my chaplain today is Ann Cummins with us.
How many years did you do it in sixth grade?
I couldn't read yet.
All right. We do appreciate all the hard work and labor that comes from the Elks Lodge, and we appreciate your longstanding, longstanding commitment to the community. So, thank you, thank you, man. Glad to be able to recognize you. We have no unfinished business today. So item number nine, this is the time and place is advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 316 North Hood Avenue in District 2. Luis Alberto Arazo Terran and wife Yuri Carolina Suarez being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in August of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
On recommendation of the Building Department, I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second. Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 2812 Scenic Highway in District 7. Brenda Satterfield Baker and the Robinson Law Firm being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Ma'am, if you would, please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Brenda Satterfield Baker. My address is 904 Montebispo Drive, Gadsden.
Okay.
I'm the owner of this property. I guess I just need to give you a little history. My husband and I owned this property. My husband passed away four and a half years ago. I was in estate litigation with my former stepchildren for four years. It's just been resolved. I am in the process of doing what repairs need to be done on this house. This house has over 600 window panes. There were six window panes broken in this house. They've all been replaced. The garage has damaged where, over the time that it has sat there vacant, the gutters had stopped up, and it had done some repair, some damage on the end of the garage. That's being repaired as we speak. I have material lists, I have paperwork that shows where the Alabama Power turned the power on way before this situation started, before I was even aware. I have pictures, lots of pictures of the house. And it's, my plans are to put it on the market for sale as soon as the repairs are made.
So if I'm hearing you right, your request is for some additional time?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Do you know about how much time you would need?
30 days, I hope, because I need it to be on the market like yesterday.
Okay. Just a question, now, have you spoken with either that gentleman there or this gentleman here?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Let's go through the process and then we'll come up with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started our case in August of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Recommendation of the Building Department, move to adopt.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 2812 Scenic Highway in District 7. Brenda Satterfield Baker and the Robinson Law Firm being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Ma'am, if you would, please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Brenda Satterfield Baker. My address is 904 Montebispo Drive, Gadsden.
Okay.
I'm the owner of this property. I guess I just need to give you a little history. My husband and I owned this property. My husband passed away four and a half years ago. I was in estate litigation with my former stepchildren for four years. It's just been resolved. I am in the process of doing what repairs need to be done on this house. This house has over 600 window panes. There were six window panes broken in this house. They've all been replaced. The garage has damaged where, over the time that it has sat there vacant, the gutters had stopped up, and it had done some repair, some damage on the end of the garage. That's being repaired as we speak. I have material lists, I have paperwork that shows where the Alabama Power turned the power on way before this situation started, before I was even aware. I have pictures, lots of pictures of the house. And it's, my plans are to put it on the market for sale as soon as the repairs are made.
So if I'm hearing you right, your request is for some additional time?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Do you know about how much time you would need?
30 days, I hope, because I need it to be on the market like yesterday.
Okay. Just a question, now, have you spoken with either that gentleman there or this gentleman here?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Let's go through the process and then we'll come up with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition?
Mr. President, we started our case in August of last year. There have been no improvements. We were up three days ago taking pictures. We're certainly not opposed to the house being rehabbed. It was never our intention to remove the house. We would have come up with a rehab plan and bid this work out. Certainly am not opposing today, 30-day table. When we got involved, it was reported from the neighbors as an abandoned house, overgrown lot. That's what we found, and that's why we're here today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. What is the pleasure of the council?
Yeah, let me speak on this if you would. As you can tell, the house is starting to be rehabbed. It'll be, it's a shame to tear down something like this that we know now after four and a half years that she's got the settlements and she will be fixing the house up, I have no doubt. I'm going to ask for a 30-day table, but in that 30-day, I don't, have you got a permit on it right now?
I don't.
Okay. I think that's, Brian, will that be number one? Get a permit to build, which we should have already had, really, and then go from there. The reason I don't go for abatement is, abatement goes on, on, on. This way, she'll get a contractor and get that thing up to date.
I have one.
There you go. So we got a permit, the contractor, and let's get it.
Thank you.
That's for a 30-day table.
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien in the amount of $2,041.40 against property at 1026 Fourth Avenue in District 5. The last known owners are the state of Alabama, Strategic Municipal Investments, and First Family. This is for demolition that's already been performed. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Sorry.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing a nuisance abatement lien in the amount of $2,541.40 against property at 1203 Fourth Avenue in District 5. The last known owners are the state of Alabama, Ladue Freeman, and wife Irene M. Freeman. This is for demolition that's already been performed. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing a nuisance abatement lien in the amount of $2,541.40 against property at 1203 Fourth Avenue in District 5. The last known owners are the state of Alabama, Ladue Freeman, and wife Irene M. Freeman. This is for demolition that's already been performed. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to adopt the resolution, please.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien in the amount of $2,041.40 against property at 1026 Fourth Avenue in District 5. The last known owners are the state of Alabama, Ladue Freeman, and wife Irene M. Freeman. This is for demolition that's already been performed. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to adopt the resolution, please.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien in the amount of $2,616.40 against property at 507 South 13th Street in District 5. The last known owner is Jarius Rawls. This is for demolition that has been, that's already been performed. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to adopt the resolution, please.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien in the amount of $2,616.40 against property at 507 South 13th Street in District 5. The last known owner is Jarius Rawls. This is for demolition that has been, that's already been performed. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 15 is a resolution awarding bid number 3374 for a recycled trailer. The NEAPA coordinator has recommended awarding the bid to Outback Trailers, and the amount is $1,695 for a six-and-a-half-foot by 10-foot trailer. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'm thinking, I was trying to think in my head how many of these we have. I would say we probably have between 30 and 40 of these trailers now, and all over the county and all over the city, and it's just helping our recycling because we pick up cardboard at all places once a trailer. And, you know, we've got the hospitals, they fill them up about once or twice, you know, a day, and we go over there, and it's just all around Jackson, and it's all around, you'll see those trailers.
I saw the figures, I don't want to quote them, I'm not sure, but you won't believe how many tons that we've already done away with. And when we first were doing that, we had to haul the stuff to Albert Vale or Anniston. Now they can get it.
We also have a bailer for that, too. Don't we bail that stuff over there?
Yeah, we've got several of those things through a decade.
That's what I was thinking. And all this money's grant money, so, you know, we're getting them.
What account does our rebates go back to, Mayor?
Oh, Lord. You'd have to ask Lisa Rock.
But the point in me asking that question is obviously, you know, I just want the public to know that those recycled goods generate financial rebates for the city.
Yeah. And we're already in the third landfill process since I've been in office, so, I mean, it fills up really quick.
You know, so what basically we're doing here is we're getting a little bit of money for, and we're also saving our landfill and environment going green, you know, so that's a big thing going green now.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 16 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Academy Sports and Outdoors. This is for the company to sponsor the city parks and recreation department in the amount of $1,200 and other items in exchange for advertising at certain city events. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business?
Yes, I have one that's a request from Park and Recreation, and I've asked for unanimous consent. This is concerning agreement with the Gadsden City Baseball Club for the use of the field at Gadsden State Community College.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to ask for unanimous consent, please, for a resolution approving change order number one of alighting upgrades of 210 Locust Street to ANS Electrical Contractors in the amount of $15,188.05.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is where we've, we already had a contract sum for $104,900, and we needed this extra lighting to go in there for safety, where people could see what was going on a lot better. And total on this whole thing will be $120,088.05. That's the total.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to ask for unanimous consent, please, for a resolution approving change order number one of alighting upgrades of 210 Locust Street to ANS Electrical Contractors in the amount of $15,188.05.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards, remarks by the mayor and council. Councilman Reed?
Yeah, a couple of things. I did want to remind everybody about the calling emergencies to the MA, the fire, and the police about numbers on your house, to make them larger so they can see them. It's highly important. It's been out there a pretty good while, but I did want to remind everybody. And also, we're having a rash of break-ins, I'm sure in all the districts, but I'm concerned about mine, too. If you see anybody that's not supposed to be in your neighborhood, if they're driving a truck you haven't seen before, a car, they look suspicious, or if you see anybody walking or especially riding a bicycle, report them to the police as a suspicious person and have them checked out. We've just had, we've had too much. And I think I'm getting back to proactive policing here, Scott, is that not true? About we can knock it off. If we report these people, then get them picked up, get them moved on, so later they won't come back here and hit your place and burglarize you. Makes sense to me. The other one is, if somebody knocks on your door, and this is happening a lot, too, they're selling vacuum cleaners supposedly, or they're selling driveway fixins and this sort of thing, be reminded that all they're trying to do is get inside your house to case it out and come back later and hit you. That's one of the other things happening. But my main thing is this, when you hit your front door, him or her, ask them for the permit issued by the police department. If they don't have a permit, very silently call the police, because an ordinance against solicitation without a permit from the police. Am I correctly, or am I going astray? It's true. Well, you got a business license, but we're talking about primarily, these people are supposed to have a door, they're door-to-door in solicitation, but they ought to have a permit from the police department. All I'm saying is, if it's suspicious, call the police and let them check it out. That's pro-police. Police can't be everywhere, so I'm just asking that you report.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Reed. There's also space in that discussion about neighborhood watch programs. There are a number of communities within the city that have some pretty effective neighborhood watch programs, but want to encourage those who don't have a formalized neighborhood watch program to reach out to the police department, where they will provide technical support on setting those up. Do not depend on your elected official to set up your neighborhood watch program, because that's the responsibility of the individuals within that community, so please, please remember that, and please know that you don't have to do it by yourself. The police do offer some very effective, I may add, technical support as it relates to those programs. Okay.
Basically, it's nothing more than being a nosy neighbor, and it pays off.
Councilman Kenny?
Yes, I'd just like to say, we've got some money set aside for Alabama City, and there'll be some good things coming. We've got a police precinct coming over in the old General Forest School building, and we're going to probably move the library and do some stuff there, and also, we'll have a community center be over there, so just as soon as we get the architect's work done, we'll, we can talk about that a little more.
Okay. Councilman Billis?
Yes, I'd like to remind people that as I ride over the city, people just throw trash out just everywhere, and, you know, the city can only pick it up so many times, we only have so many people to do that. But, I mean, please, people, if you see someone throwing trash out, write a tag number down, and we're threatening them or whatever. But, I mean, it's just unbelievable the amount of trash that's put out on our city streets every day. Now, South 11th, they picked up on that about a week ago, and today, it looks like it's not even been, they've not even been over there. So the employees, the city can only do so much to alleviate this problem. It's a people thing, so just be mindful of the trash that's in your neighborhood. Try to pick it up if you can, because that's what I do. And also, most of us, you have community meetings, and, you know, it's just discouraging when you have a community meeting and six people show up, but then every time you go somewhere, 20 people stop you and complain about something. So, you know, beg pardon?
Don't start.
What did you say, Mr. Toes?
I said, "You ought to feed them."
Okay. I'm going to let that statement, what did you say, Lee?
Don't start. Always want to throw something in on me.
Well, you know, just participate in these things, and you can help your community, and just be mindful that we don't have to have these meetings, but we do it to try and inform you and let you inform us as to the things that we need to get done in the city.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Councilman Billis. Thank you.
We would have come up with a rehab plan and bid this workout. Certainly am not opposing today's 30-day table. When we got involved, it was reported from the neighbors as an abandoned house, overgrown lot. That's what we found, and that's why we're here today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. What is the pleasure of the council?
Yeah, let me speak on this if you would. As you can tell, the house is starting to be rehabbed. It'll be, it'll be up. It's a shame to tear down something like this that we know now after four and a half years that she's got the settlements, and she will be fixing the house up, I have no doubt. I'm going to ask for a 30-day table, but in that 30-day, I don't, have you got a permit on it right now?
I don't.
Okay, I think that's...
Today.
Brian, will that be number one? Get a permit to build, which we should have already had, really, and then go from there. The reason I don't go for abatement is, abatement goes on and on and on. This way, she'll get a contractor and get that thing up to date. There you go. So get a permit, contractor, and let's get it. Ask for a 30-day table.
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien in the amount of $2,041.40 against property at 1026 Fourth Avenue in District 5. The last known owners are the State of Alabama, Strategic Municipal Investments, and First Family. This is for demolition that's already been performed. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing a nuisance abatement lien in the amount of $2,541.40 against property at 1203 Fourth Avenue in District 5. The last known owners are the State of Alabama, Ladue Freeman, and wife Irene M. Freeman. This is for demolition that's already been performed. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to adopt the resolution, please.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien in the amount of $2,616.40 against property at 507 South 13th Street in District 5. The last known owner is Jarius Rawls. This is for demolition that has been, that's already been performed. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 15 is a resolution awarding bid number 3374 for a recycle trailer. The NEAPA coordinator has recommended awarding the bid to Outback Trailers, and the amount is $1,695 for a six-and-a-half-foot by 10-foot trailer. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'm thinking, I was trying to think in my head how many of these we have. I would say we probably have between 30 and 40 of these trailers now, and all over the county and all over the city, and it's just helping our recycling, because we pick up cardboard at all places once a trailer. And, you know, we've got the hospitals, they fill them up about once or twice, you know, a day, and we go over there, and it's just all around Jackson, and it's all around you will see those trailers.
I saw the figures, I don't want to quote them, I'm not sure, but you won't believe how many tons that we've already done away with. And when we first were doing that, we had to haul the stuff to Albertville or Anniston. Now they can get it.
We also have a bailer for that, too.
Yeah, we've got several.
That's what I was thinking. And all this money's grant money, so, you know, we're getting them.
What account does our rebates go back to, Mayor?
Oh, Lord. You'd have to ask Lisa Rock.
But the point, the point in me asking that question is obviously, you know, I just want the public to know that those recycled goods generate financial rebates for the city.
Yeah. And we're already in the third landfill process since I've been in office, so, I mean, it fills up really quick.
So what basically we're doing here is we're getting a little bit of money for it, and we're also saving our landfill and environment going green, you know, so that's a big thing going green now.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 16 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Academy Sports and Outdoors. This is for the company to sponsor the city Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $1,200 and other items in exchange for advertising at certain city events. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business?
Yes, I have one that's a request from Park and Recreation, and I've asked for unanimous consent. This is concerning agreement with the Gadsden City Baseball Club for the use of the field at Gadsden State Community College.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
I believe this was an agreement that we've already agreed on, but there was just a little minor change, and one of the items had to do with the cost. It was item 17, so we're just making a correction or word change within the agreement.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd ask for unanimous consent, please, for a resolution approving change order number one of alighting upgrades at 210 Locust Street to ANS Electrical Contractors in the amount of $15,188.05.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is where we've, we already had a contract sum for $104,900, and we needed this extra lighting to go in there for safety, so people could see what was going on a lot better. And total on this whole thing will be $120,088.05. That's the total.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards. Remarks by the mayor and council. Councilman Reed?
Yeah, a couple of things. I did want to remind everybody about the calling emergencies to the MA, the fire, and the police about numbers on your house, to make them larger so they can see them. It's highly important. It's been out there a pretty good while, but I did want to remind everybody. And also, we're having a rash of break-ins, I'm sure in all the districts, but I'm concerned about mine, too. If you see anybody that's not supposed to be in your, in your neighborhood, if they're driving a truck you haven't seen before, or a car, or they look suspicious, or if you see anybody walking, or especially riding a bicycle, report them to the police as a suspicious person and have them checked out. We've just had, we've had too much. And I think I'm getting back to proactive policing here, Scott, is that not true? About we can knock it off. If we report these people, then get them picked up, get them moved on, so later they won't come back here and hit your place and burglarize you. Makes sense to me. The other one is, if somebody knocks on your door, and this is happening a lot, too, they're selling vacuum cleaners supposedly, or they're selling driveway fixings and this sort of thing, be reminded that all they're trying to do is get inside your house to case it out and come back later and hit you. That's one of the other things happening. But my main thing is this, when you hit your front door, him or her, ask them for the permit issued by the police department. If they don't have a permit, very sadly, call the police, because an ordinance against solicitation without a permit from the police, isn't that correctly, or am I going astray?
It's true.
Well, you got a business license, but we're talking about primarily, these people are supposed to have a door, they're door-to-door in solicitation, but they ought to have a permit from the police department. All I'm saying is, if it's suspicious, call the police and let them check it out. That's pro-police. Police can't be everywhere. So I'm just asking that you report.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Reed. There's also space in that discussion about neighborhood watch programs. There are a number of communities within the city that have some pretty effective neighborhood watch programs, but want to encourage those who don't have a formalized neighborhood watch program to reach out to the police department, where they will provide technical support on setting those up. Do not depend on your elected official to set up your neighborhood watch program, because that's your, that's the responsibility of the individuals within that community. So please, please remember that, and please know that you don't have to do it by yourself. The police do offer some very effective, I may add, technical support as it relates to those programs.
Basically, it's nothing more than being a nosy neighbor, and it pays off.
Councilman Kenny?
Yes, I'd just like to say, we've got some money set aside for Alabama City, and there'll be some good things coming. We've got a police precinct coming over in the old General Forest School building, and we're going to probably move the library and do some stuff there, and also, we'll have a community center be over there. So just as soon as we get the architect's work done, we'll, we can talk about that a little more.
Councilman Billis?
Yes, I'd like to remind people that as I ride over the city, people just throw trash out just everywhere, and, you know, the city can only pick it up so many times, we only have so many people to do that. But, I mean, please, people, if you see someone throwing trash out, write a tag number down, and we're threatening them or whatever. But, I mean, it's just unbelievable the amount of trash that's put out on our city streets every day. Now, South 11th, they picked up on that about a week ago, and today, it looks like it's not even been, it's not even been over there. So the employees, the city can only do so much to alleviate this problem. It's a people thing. So just be mindful of the trash that's in your neighborhood. Try to pick it up if you can, because that's what I do. And also, most of us, you have community meetings, and, and, you know, it's just discouraging when you have a community meeting and six people show up, but then every time you go somewhere, 20 people stop you and complain about something. So, you know... Beg pardon?
Don't start.
What did you say, Mr. Toast?
I said, "You ought to feed them."
Okay. I'm going to let that statement, what did you say, Lee?
Always want to throw something in on me.
Well, you know, just, just participate in these things, and you can help your community, and just, just be mindful that we don't have to have these meetings, but we do it to try and inform you and let you inform us as to the things that we need to get done in the city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Billis. Councilman Worley?
I'll go along with what the councilman was saying about the neighborhood watch and stuff, but when you, just don't confront these people. Just call the police. Don't, don't go up and confront them, because you don't know what these people may have on them, especially the ones on drugs and stuff. So don't, don't do that. Just give the police a call, and give them time to get out there now, because a lot of times, they may be on another call. So it takes time for them to get there. That's all I have.
All right. Councilman Worsley?
All I want to say is just welcome to the neighborhood.
All right. Mayor?
I don't have anything.
Okay. All right. All right.
Feed them.
Feed them.
If there's, if there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we...
Hey, feeding them works.
Said what?
Feeding them works.